Monday, May 1st, for the regular Bucyrus City Council meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
McKiever?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Wireball?
Here.
Potter?
Here.
Sherrick?
Here.
Spiegel?
Here.
All right, you have before you the April 18th, 2023 public hearing for the Storage Containers Minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You also have before you the April 18th Regular Council Meeting Minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have before you also the April 20th Special Council Meeting Minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak. Seeing none, any communications or petitions? Seeing none, standing committee reports, plating.
I have nothing at this time.
Public lands and buildings?
I have nothing at this time.
Health and safety?
No report, Madam President.
Finance?
No report.
Economic development?
Nothing to report today.
Service?
No report this time.
Traffic Commission?
No report.
Reporters, city officers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to, it's kind of a serious tone tonight. You've all got my report there. I begin with a quote from St. Augustine. I think it's used quite a bit today. And essentials, unity, and non-essentials, liberty, and all things charity. When we lose sight of these three ideals, especially charity, then we see how quickly, and I mean quickly, things can turn sour and the community at large suffers. I'm referring to the campaign events, the campaign literature that's been out. I've been very troubled by it, and I hope that you share my concerns. I know Dan is, and I commend him for his letter to the editor in the Telegraph Forum. It was two candidates in particular that were singled out. We've not seen this level of hatred in Bucyrus ever, and I hope that we never see it again. I've reached out to members of the Crawford County Republican Party and Central Committee, and have asked them to condemn this type of hate literature in this election and also in future election cycles. Small towns like Bucyrus are seeing increasing polarization, as Dan mentioned also, especially through politics, and it is, it's nothing but divisive. And we can all agree, excuse me, we can all disagree on the candidates and their stances, but in the end, we need to respect the candidates and thank them for their will, being willing to serve. If we allow hatred to consume our local politics, then Bucyrus will suffer. And if I can quote Dan, you know, 200 years of progress that we've made building this community can be destroyed in a very short time. I'm requesting that City Council either by resolution or a simple vote condemn this type of behavior, campaign literature, let citizens of Bucyrus and beyond know that this type of literature and behavior is not representative of the fine citizens of this community. In addition, I would also ask that a statement be included with our gratitude, sharing our gratitude with every candidate who is running for office for their willingness to serve in this most difficult time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Service Director's Report.
Jeff's report is currently taking applications for general labor in the street garage. You may pick up applications at the mayor's office or visit the city of Bucyrus website to print off an application. We are hiring lifeguards, still looking for some to be able to staff the pool. Please stop up and fill out an application at the mayor's office or, again, at the website. If you know any good swimmers that want a job and have their certification, please let us know.
Jim?
Yes?
How old do they have to be?
I think 16, right, Brian?
Okay.
16?
There are two hopefully getting their license tomorrow, but only one of them will be 16 for the summer.
Okay. Just have them come up and then...
I've been working on them all.
Okay, thank you. The Nevada Water Line is going very well, very quickly, over 10,000 feet in the ground already. It's about a third done. Cleanup week, if you aren't, if you don't know that this week is Cleanup Week, you could put out an extra six bags of trash. You have Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday to do that. If you have large stuff like televisions, tires, furniture, they have an additional charge if you put those out, like always. Bright Speed is coming also with, what do we call it? What is it?
Broadband.
Thank you, thank you. Broadband, yeah, broadband. Yes, how can they forget? Yeah, that's formerly CenturyLink, so they're coming and John's got that all on board. He's got, he's got it down. He knows what's going on, so. AEP electric rate is, AEP electric rate is going up in July, 30% for, that'll be for the June, June bill, except if you are on our aggregation program. If you are not on the aggregation program, please stop up or call the mayor's office. You need to sign up for that. And check your natural gas at the same time, too. Our natural gas rate is much lower than the aggregation rates, spot rates, excuse me. The Northwest Sewer Trunk Project will be having a bid opening on Friday, May 5th at 10:00 a.m. right here in council chambers. And that's all from Jeff's report.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions to the mayor for his report or the Safety Service Director's report?
Yeah, I agree with the mayor, obviously, about the campaign material, and, and he brought up a good point that I think the council should condemn that kind of behavior, but I don't know how we'd go about that, so. How would we go about that other than, I mean, I don't think we want to, I don't want to write a resolution and spend the money, but we just make a public statement or something or vote on a public something? I don't know. How do we do that? I mean, I don't know. I know most of you fairly well, and I think we all are on the same page on that, so.
You could issue a letter, send it to the Telegraph Forum in Crawford County now, sort of like you did, whatever, issue a letter in support of something.
Land Bank.
Land Bank, yeah.
You had mentioned sending something to the Central Committee as well?
Yes, I would.
I mean, is that advisable, Brian? What was it? Mayor had mentioned sending a letter on our behalf from us to the Central Committee.
Good, absolutely.
So I don't know if we need to send that to committee for Thursday or if we need to do something now. Whatever we need to do, you know, whatever we can do to...
I think that you could move them that from council floor. It's not a...
Not a piece of legislation.
Right, it's not a piece of legislation, so if you wanted to make a motion to issue a letter to whomever that you wanted to send it to...
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to submit a letter to the citizens of Bucyrus. We can advertise it in the Telegraph Forum in Crawford County now, how we feel about...
How about to the Central Committee?
And to the Central Committee.
And then share it with, with the news media?
That's fine, yeah.
Probably wouldn't have to be just a Republican Central Committee, probably a Democratic Central Committee also, I think, both of them, not just one.
I think, yeah, I mean, I don't want to like point fingers at a certain...
Yes, yes.
But I just mean, as council, I think, I feel, and if you guys feel that way, too, you can, we can do a letter and you can sign it. If you don't feel that way, you don't have to sign it, I guess.
Sure.
So I would like to make a motion that we prepare a letter and we sign it and send it to everyone.
I'll second that, yes.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. McKiever. All those in favor of a letter being submitted to both Central Committees of Crawford County and the citizens of Bucyrus?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Law Director.
Thank you, Madam President. So I've been speaking with Dane Kennedy, president of Bucyrus Koanis Club pertaining to the splash pad, and I'm working on preparing an agreement whereby the koanis for a period of 10 years agrees to provide maintenance to the splash pad. The koanis club will maintain the water features and be responsible for the setup and teardown at the beginning and end of the season. The city would be responsible for providing a space where the equipment could be stored. City would also be responsible for the day-to-day upkeep, such as removing any trash, rubbish, debris, keeping the lawn mowed, et cetera. May 16th, 2023, at 4:00 p.m., there's a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting pertaining to the electronic billboard that was placed in downtown Bucyrus on the old Struble Drug Store. Anyone wishing to provide input pertaining to the sign and ancillary zoning issues regarding the historic downtown district and signage should please either submit correspondence to Greg Travis, Board of Zoning Appeals clerk, or John Rostas, zoning administrator, or plan to attend. I think that that is a significant departure from the typical signage that we have in the downtown area, so I would welcome anybody that wants to come and speak on that issue. Last meeting, we heard from Daryl Smith pertaining to a couple of derelict properties on West Warren Street. I've also received several questions concerning 450 Dudley Street, and there's also a plethora of other properties, but those are sort of the ones on my radar as well as on the Mary Extension down in the flood plain. This area can be frustrating, especially when you live near one of these properties. This area of law is exceedingly slow based upon the conflict of personal property, owner's rights, as well as lack of appropriate sanctions through court to motivate change. By that, I mean, you can only fine people so much, and if they don't pay, you know, and as if you read the newspaper, we had a significant amount of drug busts in our community. So, you know, like when you're contemplating jail space and whether or not people dealing in drugs or victimizing children go to jail or somebody that is financially incapable of managing property or things to that effect, those are things that the court does consider. As I stated at the prior meeting, I've been working on demolishing 415 West Warren Street, the property that had caught fire twice. I'm submitting that to the public bid process, and I also have about $1,500 in asbestos remediation that I have to finish up there. The ultimate demolition depends on the cost. The demolition budget that I used was cut by, from $30,000 to $10,000, I believe, in the 2023 budget. We're currently working with the homeowner of 406 West Warren Street to ensure his property comes into compliance. We've dealt with him before, and he's a very nice gentleman. We just need to get out there and remind him of what the applicable property maintenance code means. 403 West Warren Street has been a blighted property for an extensive period, and we're trying to use all of the means available to attempt to finally remedy this issue. The owner moved to Columbus and sort of abandoned the property. The bank began foreclosure proceedings, but then dismissed them, I suppose, partly in because they don't want to own that property, because then it falls on them to maintain it. So I'm working on that one. I understand that that's an issue. 450 Dudley Street was inspected by H&amp;H Environmental prior to proceeding to demolition. That report indicates there would need to be in excess of $26,000 in asbestos remediation prior to us being able to demolish it. Because we are a public entity, we have to comply with the EPA mandate on asbestos and demolition and those types of things. As you're likely aware, we do not have $26,000 to remediate asbestos, and then obviously we would have to demolish it after that, so total project would be $40,000, $45,000, and then it would be an empty lot on a corner, which we would maybe sell for $1,000 or $2,000. So that one is a difficult process. I did talk to a neighbor today, and there are raccoons, cats, skunks, I forget, there's a bunch of animals, so I don't think there are any hipoponos. But we're trying to talk to the Streets Department as well as Jeff Wagner to determine what sort of things that we can do, clean up the trash and garbage out of the yard so that we can mow it, which would help with the wildlife hanging out there, boarding it up, putting a fence. It appears that maybe some of the neighbors have been dumping their trash on that, so if we keep it cleaned up and hopefully we can remediate or prevent people, maybe neighbors, maybe not neighbors, whomever it is, from dumping their trash on there. I guess then as a final aside, and you guys all know this, but when we expend money to demolish a property or man hours to, and resources cleaning up properties, we typically don't recover those. You know, we could place money on their tax, real estate taxes, but when you sell a property for $2,000 and the county already has a $10,000 tax lien, we're several thousand dollars behind. So I guess my point in that is it's just sort of a resource management question. How do we best spend our resources to ensure that, you know, neighborhoods are kept up in a proper manner, and we're not throwing good money at bad money, or situations where we won't be able to even effectuate a change, which, that's my point. On the $26,000 of asbestos remediation, it's a substantial issue. And I have talked to the land bank about grants and other issues, other programs that may be available so that we can utilize some state and/or federal funding to clean up these issues. EPA grants, things to that effect, if the EPA has any money available to assist us, since it's their mandate that we remediate the asbestos first. And then finally, not on my report, but finally, I'm not going to be here on Thursday. I have prior obligations, so if anybody has questions, comments, or concerns pertaining to the committee meetings, you all have my cell phone number. Give me a call, email, text message. I'll have everything ready Wednesday prior to leaving, and I'm sure it will go smoothly without me. Thank you.
And we have a question for the law director.
I sure do.
Oh, jeez.
We had talked last year about receivership. Is this something that can play into these programs that might benefit us? And where does that program stand? Have we made any movement with that, or are we going to?
We can. Receivership, and so that, the first step is sort of getting into court, right? And it's been my experience, the, in talking with Mr. Miller, this property is no-go for them because they're looking for properties that haven't yet gone to the point of the only viable option is demolition. They want something that they can invest some money in and then either sell it back to the homeowner or property owner for their cost, or then turn around and be able to sell it to a third party and, you know, basically turn a profit, right?
Yeah.
So they're not looking for properties that are demolition. They're looking for rehabable, rehabilitatable, something. They're looking for those kinds of properties. And he's interested, and the list that I gave him a year ago, he had maybe two out of 13 that were even viable rehab options, so, yeah. But yeah, absolutely, it's a good program. They don't want the worst of the worst either, which is a problem we run into.
My other question is, is CIC a viable option for demolition of these without having to go through the remediation as a public entity?
No, I don't. I think that they have the same problems with us. Private owners can knock things down, I believe, without asbestos, but anytime you have anything with government funds...
How can one house have that much asbestos in it? $26,000 to remove it?
That's probably one trash bag full.
The list, they said they had to remove 22 windows, and I'm not, I don't know anything about asbestos.
Yeah.
But they removed 22 windows, a lot of the duct work was wrapped in asbestos-laced...
Insulation?
Insulation.
Probably some of those ceiling tiles.
Probably ceiling tiles. I don't know, yeah.
Seems like a lot.
It was the cheapest job to get.
But it was banned for a long while.
And I would say they could try inspections for me, and out of those five, one was the old trailer park down on the river that had no asbestos, so that one got knocked down, no issue. There was a trailer that they said the only asbestos is somewhere, and as long as you dispose of it properly and use water while demolishing, no issue. The house on Warren Street had $1,500, so it seems, I don't feel like they just jacked up a price and sent it to me, but I don't, I don't know why that house is so much substantially different than some of the other ones we've looked at.
It's never been updated.
We have a couple with the land bank that came to that kind of value.
Does the land bank want this one?
No.
Just kidding, I asked.
Maybe.
Couple times, they said no. And the problem, too, with some of the grants that they look at and that we look at, they're looking at like commercial properties, not necessarily residential properties, and commercial properties that have a viability for a future use.
Yeah, the ones recently that we're working on do, but, you know, everything that we did has been all residential up until that point, so.
It's been, I think the big thing was Brownfield, Brownstone, something now.
The Brownfield grants, good for like old gas station properties and things like that. And then, you know, the more recent ones is with the state monies, you know, we're looking at like Behind Kroger, and then there's a big one over in Gang until East School, so, and the Ice Plant.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, maybe it already is, but when does this actually become a health hazard where...
Five years ago.
Yeah, I said it already is.
Well, I mean, I mean, I have a hard, I'm not picking on you, I just have a hard time understanding, you know, we have a health issue with COVID or flu or whatever, but we, and we jumped right on that, but this is a health issue. We've got rabid animals in and out of there. I mean, I don't know, are we going, is there another avenue through the Health Department or, or, yeah? And then the other thing was, what if we sold the property prior to demolition but allocated enough money for a private demolition? Say I wanted to buy this property, I was the neighbor, I'll buy it, we'll give you whatever it costs to tear it down, but you have to do it. So that was the other issue. With you saying that a private person doesn't have to go through the asbestos thing, is that a way to get around that? But I'll let your legal mind stew on that for a few weeks and then let me know.
The old end around that.
Passing the buck.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe, yeah. And I mean, yes, there are all kinds of issues.
I really don't think if we tore that down, we're going to like contaminate half the neighborhood, you know? But that's my personal opinion, maybe I'm wrong, you know?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think they'd much rather have it tore down than...
Yeah, right. I'm not, yeah, I'm not ignoring that one. I'm trying to figure something.
Yeah, I know. I know you are, so, just, just a few things that popped in my mind.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to accept city officers' reports?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on the standing or special committee and city officer reports?
John Rostas, zoning administrator for Bucyrus, just a quick update on the fiber optic plans that are occurring in the city of Bucyrus. We have two companies that are looking to do fiber optic, either upgrades or brand-new installations. Like the mayor said, it's Bright Speed, who is formerly CenturyLink. They're in the initial process of seeking right-of-way permits from the city of Bucyrus, and then my office and the engineering, our contracted engineer, McKiever and Associates, and our service department, we've been working with Omni Fiber on their plans that they submitted, and we really want this project to go smoothly because it's a whole new, basically, infrastructure that they're putting in underground, and they're, it's, it's going to be pretty, pretty intense, but we want to make sure this goes well. So our team's really reviewing those plans and trying to catch any, any issues that might come up, but please, please know that we're working hard for you on that. And the other thing we're going to have is, we're going to have a webpage dedicated to Bucyrus fiber optic in Bucyrus here, so we'll have a webpage for that that'll give you updates on both projects, where they stand, who the contact information is, how to get ahold of somebody if you have problems, or if you have issues at your neighborhood or your address during the project. So just wanted to let the public know that we're still in the early stages, but it is going to probably kick off within a month or two. All right, thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Have we already conferred with David Zach and the partnership to make sure that they're up to knowledge of everything we're looking at with the fiber optics so that he can use that as a marketability for bringing more business to town? Yeah, we've had conversations with them. He's familiar with, you know, where we're at with it? I mean, for the most part, other than the day-to-day details, but, but is, as far as, yeah, these people, these companies are coming to town and we're working with them, much as what I've shared with you here tonight.
Thanks.
All right. You're welcome.
Moving on. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time. Ordinance number 18-2023, creating section 1187.07 entitled portable shipping containers, storage containers, and similar objects. Under chapter 1187 entitled Additional Residential District Standards, under title 11 entitled Additional Zoning Requirements, under part 11 entitled Planning in Zoning Code with the Codified Ordinance of the City of Bucyrus. Ordinance number 19-2023, amending and supplementing ordinance number 66-2022, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023, by the creation of FEMA 2023-539 North Lane Street Fund, subparagraph containing a general government category containing contractual service line item and capital outlay line item and other uses line item, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 20-2023, amending and supplementing chapter 381, at sequence entitled Taxi Cab Licensing under Title 11 Licensing, under part 3 entitled Traffic Code of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Bucyrus. Ordinance number 21-2023, amending and supplementing ordinance 66-2022, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023, by appropriating unappropriated general funds, the sum of $20,900 to the capital outlay line item within the airport category, within Program 6 Transportation subparagraph, further appropriating from unappropriated waterwork funds, the sum of $40,000 to the capital outlay line item within the distribution category, within the waterwork subparagraph, further appropriating from unappropriated FEMA 2023-539 Lane Street Funds, the sum of $110,480 to the contractual services line item and $5,000 to other uses line item, with all, with all aforesaid line items being within the general government category, within the FEMA 2023-539 North Lane Street subparagraph, and finally appropriating from the unappropriated swimming, swimming pool funds, the sum of $43,000 to the personal services line item and $600 to the contractual services line item, and $50,000 to the material and supplies line item, and $14,400 to the capital outlay line item, with all aforesaid line items being within the pool category, within the swimming pool subparagraph, and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 216-2023, authorizing and directing the Bucyrus City Auditor in behalf of the City of Bucyrus, Ohio, to issue a... of the City of Bucyrus, Ohio, to issue a warrant or warrants, as the case may be, drawn upon the appropriate appropriation or appropriations, to retroactively pay RA boards excavating or services rendered not to exceed $21,633.43, without the customary purchase order dated prior to the billing date and declaring an emergency.
May I have a motion to accept these as the first readings?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for the public to speak on the legislation that's been read for the first time.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
On proposed ordinance 18-2023, just one thing that needs updated is it says two-thirds, and it should be a simple majority, so there would not be an emergency.
Where's that at?
Under the Be Adoredane section.
Oh, halfway down.
Oh, there. Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll get that corrected. No public participation? All right. Consideration of legislation for the final time.
Resolution number 214-2023, authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bucyrus, Ohio, to ban vehicle, thank you, traffic, including bicycles except authorized emergency personnel on Saturday, June 10, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight on East Warren Street for the, for the food court, from 12:00 noon to 12:00 midnight along Sandusky Avenue from Mary Street to Oakwood Avenue, as well as the 100 blocks of Mansfield Street and Washington Square, the 100 block of East and West Rensselaer Street, the 100 block of West Warren Street, and the 100 blocks of East and West Charles Streets respectively, allowing access by local traffic and safety service personnel to the alleys located between Walnut Street and Sandusky Avenue, as well as the alleys between Poplar Street and Sandusky Avenue, in order that said streets may be utilized temporarily as a Cruisin' with the Cops Custom and Classic Car Show Parade Row for an expected 600 custom and classic automobiles, more or less, and to provide as well sufficient parking facilities for the public display of said automobiles. Said special event, to be sponsored by the Fraternal Order of the Police, Bucyrus Lodge 68, must provide for and erect all signs needed to reroute state highways according to the directions of the Service Safety Director and Chief of Police. The Service Safety Director and the Chief of Police are hereby authorized to make the necessary arrangements for the rerouting of affected traffic on both federal and state highways passing through the subject areas to facilitate the orderly movement of traffic during aforesaid time period through the city of Bucyrus, Ohio.
So moved. I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKiever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any public participation on the legislation that's been read for the final time? Seeing none. Referring back to the originated committee, proposed ordinance 18-2023, refer back to Plating. Proposed ordinance 19-2023 is refer back to Finance. Proposed ordinance 20-2023 is refer back to Health and Safety. Proposed ordinance 21-2023, refer back to Finance. Proposed resolution 214-2023 is refer back to Health and Safety, and proposed resolution 216-2023 is refer back to Finance. Committee reports on pending legislation. Plating?
Proposed ordinance 18-2023, the storage containers, Plating is favorable.
Final one here. Did you get that? Oh, no, I didn't get that one. No, we're not there yet. Okay. I apologize.
That's fine. I just, proposed ordinance 18-2023, the storage containers, Plating is favorable.
Finance?
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 19-2023, the creation of the FEMA 2023 grant. Finance is also favorable to proposed ordinance 21-23, various appropriations, and also favorable to proposed resolution 216-2023, payment of RA boards.
Health and Safety?
Health and Safety is favorable to proposed ordinance 20-2023, the taxi cab legislation, and Health and Safety is favorable to proposed resolution 214-2023, the Cruisin' with the Cops Car Show Street. Thank you.
Further consideration of pending legislation. For the second, third readings of proposed ordinance 19-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
McKiever?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 19-2023?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Wireball.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKiever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance 19-2023 is duly adopted. Ordinance number 21-2023, for the second and third readings of ordinance 21-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Potter.
McKiever?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 21-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Myers.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
McKiever?
Yes.
Ordinance 21-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 216-2023, for the second and third readings of proposed resolution 216-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKiever.
Sherrick?
Yes.
McKiever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 216-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKiever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Resolution 216-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 214-2023, for the second and third readings of proposed resolution 214-2023, it's a final reading. Do I have a motion to adopt? Apologize, I was on, I was on a roll.
That's okay. So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Myers.
McKiever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Resolution 214-2023 is duly adopted. Old and unfinished business? Is it in their packets?
I included it with these, yeah, because it wasn't in the original.
There was correspondence today from Ms. DeJean to Ms. Zolovic here regarding the exceptions of council dates. In her, in Ms. DeJean's review of things, she said that they were not discussed, correct?
All of them are, yes.
And there was a typo on the November 28. It said November 28, 2022, so that's been corrected. The exceptions that we're looking at are the exception of today, May 1, 2023, July 5, 2023, July 31, 2023, August 22, 2023, November 8, 2023, and November 28, 2023. So, just to make sure that we are following protocols, may I have a motion to accept these exceptions in our schedule?
I will make a motion to accept the exceptions as they have been amended in our schedule.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Does anybody else have any old or unfinished business? Do we have any newer miscellaneous business? We have no one absent. Does anyone have any referrals?
I make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there anything pressing on the, on any of the committee agendas for Thursday? If we have no new referrals, is there a need to meet?
Yeah, there's billots, the billots on there, May 4 billot. Income tax is on the finance, and there's one for...
Okay, good enough.
There's another one I had to add.
It's fine. It'll be quick, though.
I think it was public lands.
Yeah, the Pine's Rest, is that guy coming?
We don't have anybody from Pine's Rest for yet. I haven't heard anything from them, so.
So basically Finance.
So basically it's a finance.
Finance and Health and Safety.
I want to, there's one, one other.
Well, we'll just all show up, and it'll be quick.
Well, I wouldn't show up.
Okay, you don't have to.
No, I wanted to say I would be able to.
You had some other things to change on the billot. Is that ready to go, or?
We were just talking about, somebody said there was something.
No, there was something for the city service safety garage or something.
Yeah.
Jeff Dunn and Wagner had said something, but I don't remember. Do you remember what it was, Mr. Ross, Dash?
I don't remember.
The billot may not be ready yet, because we didn't get the information.
Check into it, and, like, you know, let's see if it's known tomorrow.
Yeah, if you determine we don't need a meet, we can save that for the following.
That will be fine. All right. I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Ms. Sherrick to be adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at 7:42.